Call the meeting order, roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dawkin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? I would like to make a comment at the end of the meeting in regards to our activity for Wednesday and the proposals that we have received from four firms for the city administrator position search. See no other entertaining motion to accept the consent items. So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the consent items discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls same sign, that motion carries. Scheduled hearing, we have Public Works Director Christensen on our annual small municipal separate storm sewer systems report. Called the S4 or whatever they used to call it.
MS4, yeah, see that.
MS4, okay.
Ten times fast. Thanks Mayor, members of the council. Once a year you have to see, you have to see, I have to put together, or I have put together this report. It gets refiled with the state June 30th every year. It's the annual stormwater meeting or report of what we've done the last year as it pertains to stormwater and ditches and ponds and wetlands and things of that nature. So it'll be about five minute presentation here and I'll move on. Provided the projector stays with us, I think it will now. So the purpose of the meeting is to continue to raise awareness of the importance of good stormwater management. It's also to give an updated status of compliance with the MS4, which is, as you said, Mr. Mayor, is the municipal storm sewer, separate storm sewer systems permit conditions. So what have we done in 2014? What's the city currently doing or will plan to do in 2015? And what does the city plan to do into the future? That's actually probably better to look at them than me anyway, so.
That was a nice diversion, was that plan?
I don't know how to segue out of that, so. All right, what do we plan to do in the future and allow the public to comment on this process as well as what are procedures that we have proposed? So what is an MS4? As we said, it's municipal separate storm sewer systems, it's conveyance or system of conveyances designed to use for collecting stormwater. And this includes roads, drainage systems, streets, catch basins, curbs, gutters, ditches, manmade channels, storm drains owned or operated by government unit having jurisdiction under section 208 of the Clean Water Act and discharges waters to the United, of the United States. Basically, that's a long definition that says it's our stormwater system that gets the water out of streets and backyards and into the cricks and rivers. Excuse me. So a little background, the MPCA designated under Minnesota chapter 7090, 7090, that all cities outside of urbanized areas, population greater than 10,000, must obtain an NPDES stormwater permit. And that's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Engineers like to use an acronym, so there'll be a lot of them in this report, sorry about that. Wilmer meets or has met the requirements for the designated MS4. We currently have a current census, 2010 census of 19,610 population. City originally received approvals for the SWIP, which is Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, and the MS4 permit in 2008. The current general permit coverage goes through July 31st of 2018. So what's a SWIP? As I said, stormwater pollution prevention, I said plan, it's a program. City developed a SWIP to address six minimal control measures set by the MPCA. Number one, public education outreach. Two is public participation and involvement, illicit discharge, detection and elimination, construction site runoff controls, post-construction stormwater management, pollution prevention and good housekeeping. The goal of the SWIP and any SWIP is to create best management practices which will reduce or eliminate sediment and other pollutants for our lakes, rivers and wetlands. So from the dates March 10th of 2014 through October 28th of 2014, the city through street sweeping collected 3,555 cubic yards of material just from the streets. And that truck parked in front of there is actually a full-sized truck, not a, you know, not a Hot Wheels, so it's a pretty large pile of material that came off of our streets. So accomplishments that we completed in 2014, we inspected and/or inventoried ponds and wetlands. We, actually 151 of 163 of those ponds and wetlands that were, have been inspected since 2008, and we do that in-house. So accomplishments completed in 2014, we've also inspected 56 outlets, outfalls and culverts and 21 ponds. Other accomplishments completed in 2014, we've adopted illicit discharge ordinance, we've adopted a watershed management plan, and we've removed, if you may have noticed, trees from the civic center pond. And that project is actually, we're bidding that project to complete removal of some of the material, quite a bit of the material from that pond, so it acts as a pond again. Continuing on completion, accomplishments completed in 2014, we did stormwater complaint inspections and it's just some pictures of things that we ran across over the, over the year. So what are we planning for 2015? We'll continue construction site inspections on every construction site. We'll, we plan on or would like to update a webpage, revise our stormwater ordinance, continue to educate city staff, developers, contractors, homeowners and the general public on the importance of stormwater quality. So our annual report includes submitting of this report by June 30th, which this public hearing is one, one issue of that report that we have to submit. We include any comments received from the public. We'll notify the MPCA of any changes to our SWIP and we'll document the number of people present at the annual meeting. And so it would look really good to say there's 20 or 30 people at this meeting. I'm sure that's what everybody's here for. With that, I said I'd be quick, are there any questions or comments?
Are there any questions from the public? I think you have more than 30, so.
Any questions from the public?
Mr. Riddler? Please. Name and address, please.
Joe Riddler, 1912 20th Avenue Southwest. On this plan, I was involved with the Stormwater Task Force. The dirt that's removed from our streets, maybe we want to share where that dirt ends up. The other thing is, is that moving forward with Grass Lake, I'd like to know how this is going to affect our plan because it's going to affect the, our discharge on ditch 23A. And is that going to affect the speed it's going to end up down in Wakanda and the quality of the water? And there's a couple of other questions I have, but I don't want to bore you people with it, but moving forward with the school, and this is, I was, I signed up to talk at the open forum and I don't want to double up on this, with moving forward on our new school where the sites that they have designated to build the school, the report that came back to our city basically stated our city fills with water like a soup bowl. So I'm concerned, very concerned, that wherever they build the new school, that you folks will be voting on this, that we have proper restorage or storage pond or.
Retention?
There you go, thank you. Retention ponds built for that because that water is going to hit ditch 23A faster than it is going to the main part of our city where we're having our water problem. So I want to, if you would please keep that in mind, because that's going to be a big issue, it's going to be a big expense to that, I think additional expense to the school. But maybe Sean, maybe you'd want to explain because part of the dirt we take from our, our streets actually help our landfill. Maybe Sean wants to expand on that or not, but, so it kind of gets reused again. Thank you.
Public Works Director Christensen, you want to respond to those questions? I think there was probably four of them that I got, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I can, I can respond to any or all of those.
Did you find all of those, please?
The material that is collected off the streets, believe it or not, is considered hazardous because it comes off the streets, so it could have oil, it can have metal shavings, it can have all kinds of things in it, and so it has to go to the landfill. So Mr. Riddler is right, it has to go to the landfill. Beyond that, when it gets to the county landfill, I'm not 100% sure what they do with it. Maybe they can use it for fill, I'm not sure, but yeah, the issue is unfortunately, it's some of the sand that we put down, but as it comes off the streets, because of those contaminants in that, it has to take, be taken to the landfill. As far as the ditch 23 or the Grass Lake area, we've been in direct contact with the county, county project, county state project. Obviously, we're affected to whatever extent they continue with that project. So we've been in meetings with the county and we've, we've continued to be in direct confirmation or communication with them. And the bottom line is it shouldn't change the city of Wilmer water significantly. What it will do is it will, it'll be more efficient downstream of the city of Wilmer, and so it could possibly leave the city of Wilmer a little quicker. A full backwater effect, I try not to get too technical, but a full backwater effect, 100-year storm therefore, would actually, the level, the water level within the city of Wilmer is not going to change a whole lot with their improvements that they've got, they've got currently planned. But we're continuing to communicate with the county and the state as they do that project and, and look out for the best interest of the city of Wilmer for that. As far as the school goes, absolutely every project that comes into the engineering office and planning office is treated the same as far as releasing less than and absolutely no more than the existing water that leaves that site. And so in theory with, with new projects, and if we can reduce a little bit of that runoff with every project, then we will be better shape for the city of Wilmer as a whole.
Question, the speed of the water being discharged out of Grass Lake, will that increase as well as the water going out of Wilmer?
You know, it, going out of Grass Lake or into Grass Lake?
I think the question was going out of Grass Lake, correct? When it's going to hit, he said it was going to increase going in, but I thought your question was specific to Lake Wakanda.
Yeah, and I can't answer all the questions for Lake Wakanda, I haven't been involved in that end of the project as much as the, the outflow for city Wilmer project, but my understanding from the public meetings we've been at with the, with the county and the residents and the state and the DNR and everybody else, that they're not, that the people at Lake Wakanda are not going to be adversely affected, they're not going to, there might be a temporary drawdown of that elevation, but beyond that, I think it's going to be much the same as it is now.
Okay. Okay, anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? If not, I'll bring it to the council, council? Councilmember Ammon.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you have to officially close the public hearing and then bring it to the council.
Sean, the county reading that they had lowered Lake Wakanda by, was it eight inches approximately? Is that, you said that in your discussion just previously, you've mentioned that might be a temporary lowering?
Councilmember Ammon, that's, that's the information that I remember from one of the public hearings or public meetings that they had on this topic, that they were going to be a temporary lowering of Lake Wakanda. And I can't remember off the top of my head whether that was during construction or actually, I think it had something to do with the water quality and then they were, my, my impression was that they were going to raise that back to what it is now.
Okay, so it will just only be temporary, not a permanent lowering?
That's my understanding.
There's been some concerns over in the southeast side of town and I think we'll be dealing with that in Public Works coming in, coming up soon on ditch 23A by the, by Valley Golf Course and the water that's almost lapping against the side of the houses at times when we have those.
Councilman Ammon, is this in regards to the MS4?
Yes, I guess I'm just wondering as far as the quality of water in that area, what's, what's going to change if, if we have the continued problem with the, with too much stormwater in that ditch? Are we going to improve or even control the water quality or the flow if we don't make some improvements to that ditch?
Councilmember Ammon, I think the, the ditch acts much as it was designed to do. And also the subdivisions in the area are releasing water as they were designed. What happens sometimes is that if things get built more than what was the original design for that stormwater system, they can obviously produce more runoff than, than what was originally designed. And that's, that's where we have to pay attention and, and make sure that if additional development is happening, that water retention, water detention is, is taken care of along with those developments. So I think at this point, we, we monitor the ditch, we continue to maintain it as we've, much as we've done in the past, and, and look to the new developments and make sure that, you know, they're taking care of what they need to take care of.
All right, thank you.
Some questions, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, that 3,555 cubic yards, is that about the same from last year or two years ago?
You know what, Councilmember Fagerly, I'm not exactly sure because that, you notice that the date was the day I, pretty much the day I started, so the year prior that I've no idea, I can get that information for you. I would assume it's about the same amount of material.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your report. I guess we need to now accept the report?
Make a motion to accept it.
Second. Motion been made and seconded to accept the report, all discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls same sign, the motion does carry. Next, we have an acceptance of CenterPoint Energy Partnership Grant, Chief Felton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Jim Zelka from the CenterPoint Energy Community Partnership Grant. Back in about April of this year, the Wilmer Police Department made an application for a grant through CenterPoint Energy and he's here to talk a little bit about that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Chief. I am, I'm Jim Zelka, I'm the area supervisor for CenterPoint Energy. We started a community partnership grant program approximately in 2003. Since that time, we have donated $1.38 million to over 700 different projects to the communities that we serve. We all have a same, same goal, safety of our communities that, that we serve gas to and obviously the citizens that you have. Your fire chief, or police chief, pardon me, has applied for the grant. It's a, it's a partnership where we provide some and you provide some money. He has requested money for two AEDs, two advanced first aid kits and 32 traffic safety vests in the amount that we are giving tonight of $1,800. So I have a check to present.
Thank you.
There it is.
Would like to get a picture here too, so. Mr. Zelka and Chief Felton, if you guys, if you guys just want to come up in the front, that'd be great. I would take up the whole background. Sure, I'll stand up here. Okay.
Who wants to back up to you?
Yeah.
Now can you see the chief?
I can. Let's take one more for security measures.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
So I'll introduce a resolution to accept the grant on behalf of the police department. Somebody make that motion, please?
Also move.
Second. Motion been made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next, we have a presentation from Wilmerfest by James Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin and councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight to talk a little bit about our 70th celebration of Wilmerfest this year, the celebration of my fair city where I grew up and was born here and very proud to be part of. I do have a little help with me tonight. We'll get to our current ambassadors here in a moment. Unfortunately, their PowerPoint isn't going to work. They just found that out now, so. So when they describe the pictures on screen, just ooh and ah and we'll be okay. As I mentioned, this is our 70th celebration, starting of course with Coffee Fest 70 years ago, but we've brought in some really fun entertainment pieces. I've left each of you a copy of this year's schedule that can also be found on our website. But we want to just kind of point out a couple of the new things this year that we've added in, and our focus has always been on getting families involved, getting them out as part of the Wilmerfest celebrations. And one of the big pieces we added this year was a kids carnival, a partnership with us and the Jennie O'Turkey Store out at Robins Island with inflatables, plenty of food and fun. And that'll happen kind of in between the Grand Day Parade and the beach party out at Robins Island from 1:00 until 4:00 in the afternoon. And this is a free event, so all the inflatables are free. Jennie was actually bringing in their turkey taco truck and will be handing out turkey tacos while supplies last for free. There'll also be 250 free soccer balls for kids that show up for the first 250 kids. So again, that opportunity to get families and children involved. One of the other things you have before you in your spots, each of the councilmembers has a ticket to our Hog Heaven Invitational. This is our first annual Rib Fest. The mayor doesn't get a ticket because he'll be judging this year.
That's a scary thought.
Yeah. He is one of our five judges, along with Representative Dave Baker, Captain Mike Anderson from the Wilmer Police Department, one of our former board members, Dave A. Strike will also be there, and then the Queen of the Lakes from the Aquatennial, our past Wilmerfest queen, Laura Schwartz, will also be in attendance as one of the judges. And that happens on Friday night at Wilmerfest from 4 till 6. It's a partnership with Marcus Construction and Cashwise Foods, another one of the new events. We also are bringing back kind of one of the old tried and trues. I was requested numerous times to get this back on the docket by former Mayor Dick Ogland. And with Dick's passing, I'm kind of bummed that he won't be able to be at this, but we are bringing back the flag raising ceremony to kick off Wilmerfest and I would invite each of you, if you can, to be part of that. That's on Tuesday morning at 8:00 at Selvig Park. It should be a very special event, something that Dick had talked to me numerous times about wanting to get that back because of that association with our sister city. So we're very excited to bring that back in as well as a return of the Fireman's Challenge to the block party. The JCs have put in a lot of effort into getting this year's block party up and running and they've got a lot of great events, including the Fireman's Challenge, which will be nice. Maybe we can get the police department to help judge it, that might be more fun if we get there.
I bet somebody would get wet.
Yes. I want to say thank you, first of all, to the council for their continued support of our town's festivities. We have a volunteer board that really gets together and meets starting in August to plan the next event. And actually this year, we're planning to meet in July to kind of get the ball rolling throughout that. We're very honored to be able to, to represent Wilmer and to put together an event that really focuses on a lot of the fun, a lot of the entertainment, a lot of the diversity that, that is our great city. We're also very excited to help support these three young women and our, our new ambassadors that will go forward and represent Wilmer in the next year as they go out to all the different events throughout the state, really throughout our region and even up to Canada. And I'm going to step away for a moment and let them talk a little bit about that as they introduce themselves, and if you have questions, I will be here for that afterwards.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Liz Howg, I'm the 2015 Wilmerfest Aqua Princess.
Hi, my name's Raquel Aguilar, I'm Wilmerfest 2015 International Princess.
And I'm Janessa Palmer, I'm the 2015 Queen of Festivals for Wilmerfests. And we'd first of all just like to say thank you so much for being here tonight and being an active part of our community and pushing Wilmer forward and making Wilmer a great place to live. We don't have our slideshow tonight, as you can see, but we can share some great stories of having an amazing year, just being able to represent Wilmer. And as our reign is coming to an end here next week, as James said, we hope to see you all out at Wilmerfests. And we also see some buttons out in the crowd tonight. Thank you for wearing your Wilmerfest button, and if you don't have one, make sure to talk to us or one of our candidates, they'll be selling them. Oh, they're not selling buttons this year. We'll be giving away buttons this year, even better. Buttons, we can help show your support for Wilmerfest and the community. And, but thank you for being a community filled with support and for supporting us, letting us do all these amazing things we've done in the past year and for making it a treat and truly an honor to be able to represent this town. I guess we can start off with talking about some of the stuff we've done this year. Not only have we been going, obviously sitting in the parades, looking pretty, that's part of the job, but we've also been going and meeting with a lot of other delegates, as you can say, royalty, different royal families and other young women, some young men, families representing their own communities all over the state of Minnesota, throughout South Dakota, and yes, as James said, all the way to Canada. I'll turn it over to Liz to give you a little bit of a Canada story and what we did up there.
All right. Well, they have Festival de voyageur in Canada, we went to Winnipeg, and it was a lot of being outside in 40 below weather, which was great, but it was very different from what we have here, which was a great experience to go and just kind of see something different than what we're used to and.
What was your favorite food in Canada?
Oh, we had poutine, which was french fries with gravy and cheese curds on it.
Wow.
That was awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, so Canada was one big highlight. We went up there in February over Valentine's weekend, got to take in the, the French culture, a little bit different for us, and we made some really good friends in Canada. And actually, one of the, one of our acquaintances from Canada who's become a very good friend of ours, we met when we were in South Dakota, celebrating the South Dakota Snow Queen Festival, and Raquel was with me for that one, so now it's her turn.
South Dakota was a lot of fun. I don't know, we met a lot of different people from Florida, so that was really cool, great different. We had a scavenger hunt, which we ran all over town and learned about their town and all that they do, which was great. They have a little dance that they do, that was a lot of fun. What else did we do? We met Frosty, we had to find Frosty to figure out who that was, so we ran around town looking for him, or her, it was a her.
Yeah, and South, South Dakota was another one of the big weekend trips, week, yes, weekend-long trips that we took, spending a lot of time and again, making new friends out there. And one of the things that I'm very excited about, and I'm very honored to once again be representing Wilmer and representing Wilmerfest this time, I will be going on to the Minneapolis Aquatennial upcoming here in July, the third week of July, best days of summer. So if you would like to go up to Minneapolis and see that, I will also be there, these two will come with me. But the delegates we met from Canada, from South Dakota and a few others will be there as honored guests, so they'll be there renewing our friendships and seeing everybody again. And as long, as well as 49, yes, 49 other candidates who are other queens and princesses from their own towns and communities all around Minnesota, who I will get to participate in this with throughout the week. And spend a week going throughout Minneapolis, representing Wilmerfests, wearing a crown and taking in all the sights and sounds there, and then attending the coronation at the end and we'll see where that takes me from there. But it's been an exciting year so far. The three of us have plenty more stories and if you go online to Facebook and like our Wilmerfest Ambassador page or our Wilmerfest page, you can see all the photos that we have to share and hear more stories. But thank you so much for having us tonight and we hope to see you guys next week.
Sounds good. Is it okay if we see if the council has some questions for you guys?
Yeah. We love it.
Questions for the candidates? Questions for the candidates or the queens?
We had a nice interview process, a couple different interviews, actually, so we're good at taking questions.
Anybody have any questions for them? Otherwise, just want to thank you for representing Wilmer, representing us well. Thank you for all you do as being ambassadors for our community, so we really appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
James?
If I can just quickly add to what they said. They mentioned a few events. They have about 45 to 50 appearances throughout the year, where they go to either a different festival or to a different event to represent Wilmer. We actually, this year, got to experience quite a few firsts with Raquel. She had never eaten cheese curds before, had never been to the county fair before, so some opportunities for her to get out and do a lot of everything, cattle corn, just a great experience, but an opportunity for these young women to really mature. And that's really part of this program, is to see the change that they have and where they come from when we first meet them at our orientation, to the poise, the quirkiness and fun that happens as they learn and get that opportunity to go up and speak publicly, that not something they really are into to start with, but really see that development, that change in them as part of the process and part of the fun. I also want to mention, this year, we have our grand marshals, and we haven't actually told them yet that they're our grand marshals, though we have talked to their supervisor, but we've invited the Public Works Department for the city of Wilmer to be our honorary grand marshals this year. So, I don't believe I can thank them enough for all that they do to help us put this festival on. It starts Tuesday, it runs through Saturday, sometimes Sunday, depending on what the weather does to us, but it really is a community effort, and we do appreciate all that they do as well. So, if you happen to see any of the members of the Public Works Department, thank them for what they do to help us put this festival on. It really is a big effort, that's for sure, and I'm free to answer any questions if you'd like.
Any questions for James?
Be nice.
Looks like we're really nice today, no questions at all. Thank you so much for your work. Appreciate all you do for our communities, so thank you. Next, we'll have a dog park presentation. I just want to thank the IT people for our new projector, so it's working well so far, so I hope I didn't just jinx it for you, Lori.
Yeah, thanks, your honor. Thank you, the Honorable Mayor and Councilman, and I'd like to thank the Public Utilities and Works Commission. We presented this KC Dog presentation at their meeting, and they invited us to do it here at the council meeting, so thank you for this opportunity. So, first of all, I'm kind of going to do a little history. You did jinx us. Oh, there we go. Okay, you didn't. A little brief history on what KC Dog is and the volunteer group that has gathered some information. In April 2014, a group of five of us that are dog lovers gathered with the intention of developing an off-leash dog park in the community, and the five that are on this committee are Tanya Rosenau, Scott Watkins, Bev Hartsburg, myself, and a liaison from the Wilmer community and Rec Department, Pam Ruhlink. This group was kind of developed off of the Vision 2040, and that goal number three with that Vision 2040, in the things-to-do category, people in the community asked for a dog park. So, we kind of spun off of that Vision 2040 group. And part of that, too, we've had, in the community, analysts with having the SRF Consulting Group come and look at the different categories and the different parks that are in our Wilmer community right now, and they used the dog park as a thing-to-do that people in the community wanted to have. So, in their consulting group and in their analysis, they looked at Lyons Park as the proposed ideal location to have and put that into a master park plan for the city of Wilmer. Currently, we are on Facebook as KC Dog. We have over 550 Facebook fans and visitors and friends, so if you have time, please like us on Facebook. We need all the support we can get, so we appreciate anybody that's a dog lover or just would like to see us have a dog park in Wilmer, please friend us. And as part of an accepted master park plan that was presented to the council in February of this year, 2015, the dog park was in that plan, and we currently do not have any off-leash dog park in the city limits. And there was, in that plan, a proven need that the city could use such a facility. So, currently, our group is trying to engage in doing fundraising to develop this dog park.
Just a minute, Lori.
Okay.
Jim, could you check the back room for us?
Actually, that was Officer Schneider. The door was left open, so...
Okay, thank you. We just heard a noise back there and wanted to get checked out, so...
Who let the dogs out?
Exactly.
Anyway, in the park plan, several locations were identified for the dog park, and that included Robins Island, Hadeen Park, and Lyons Park. And in their analysis, they decided that the Lyons Park location would be the best for a dog park. It's centrally located in the community, and it's not adjacent to neighborhoods. People could walk to the dog park with their pets. We have met with the Lyons Park, and because it was an underutilized park within the city that's already maintained by the city, they're in agreement that they would like to see the dog park committee work to use that area as a dog park. And we also are going to work with the Lyons Group to do some fundraising activities for raising money for that. So, our big thing is to utilize and develop that park that's already being maintained by the city. So, this is kind of a proposed map that we've kind of developed for what Lyons Park will look like with a dog park. And you can see that the shelter here, the fencing of the dog park will be behind that shelter area. And we have several little benches and some waste disposal systems, and this here is a double-gated entry that when you go in, you'll have your dogs on a leash. You go in, and then you can take them off the leash, and you'll enter this gate to go to the dog, the bigger dog park, or you go this direction and go to the smaller dog park. So, I just wanted to kind of explain that that's a double-gated safety precaution type of thing. And this, I will explain a little bit later, but the red brick pathway is a fundraising idea that we have, so I'll explain that a little bit later. But some of our goals that we have, we would like to see an attractive, enclosed, eco-friendly off-leash dog park for the city of Wilmer. And we will partner with the city of Wilmer to develop this, to develop an attractive space for the city, for the people, and for the pets. And we wanted to make it very accessible to the entire community and visitors for the city that come to visit our city. We are looking that we will raise money, current and in the future, to help the different phases of the park as it grows and people use it more, we're willing to develop fundraising ideas for that purpose as well. And a couple just interesting facts that we wanted to share with everybody is that more households have dogs than children, and it's about 46 million U.S. families have a dog, 38 million homes have children, and currently in Wilmer, we have 37 parks that are for children and families, and we have none for dogs. Americans spend $41 billion each year on pets. Well, not billion, but they spend enough on mine. And 60% of owners report that they travel with their pet, and that was in 2010. So, our big goal here is also to help promote people to come to Wilmer, and I know that we have a theme that we want beds and heads, so we're going to add to that, that we want tails in town as well. A dog park in Wilmer will provide space with safe boundaries for their families to enjoy their pets and the outdoors. And quality time with their pets helps owners, helps the dogs be happy, helps control their behavior, and in a sense that will help with our safety issues with animals and unwanted phone calls to the police and to maintain those dogs for their behavior. We want to offer an exciting amenity for Wilmer and the community and the visitors, and that will help develop a sense of community as well. We want to provide a safe place for pets, and we do have some ideas for different events in the future that we want to plan. Of course, the Lyons Club has their Seeing Eye Program, and we want to get involved with them to develop that. And we also are so excited about the K-9 units with the county and the city here, and we're going to partner with them to do a couple friendly programs to have the kids come out and meet the dogs and their officers that are training them. So, we are very excited to, like a meet-and-greet type of thing with the K-9 units in the area. Rice Hospice and their pet program, we want to work with them. And actually, down the road, we'd like to develop some agility courses to do some training and hold some contests. The big thing, too, that we want to help increase the number of dog licenses that are generated for the city of Wilmer, and that will also, being they will get a license, then the pets will be vaccinated and help with the health of the pets in the community as well. As I stated before, help prevent and help the behavior of the animals in the city, and we also want to encourage responsible dog owners to get their pets vaccinated and to have the licenses for the city, which in turn will create a good environment for the dog park as well. And this is just an idea that we have developed for a fundraiser idea, which I talked about the red brick pathway that goes up to the gates. We're going to be selling bricks for that walkway, and we're going to be selling them for a cost, and then the people can put wording, a picture, any type of thing, in memory of a person, a dog, their business, whatever. So, that's what we're working on now for our first fundraiser. So, what we'll do initially is we'll lay that brickway, and as we sell the bricks, we will replace them, so people walking up to the park will be able to see all those different types of bricks. But this is the really exciting news, and I've been holding it in all day. We made it to the first 15 communities for the dog park for the Pets Safe Bark For Your Park Contest. So, we are so excited that we got word today that we're top 15. They had 300 communities that put in for a $100,000 contest to receive money to build a park for your dogs. So, today, we got the word in the email that we were one of the top 15 communities. So, we've completed phase one of the voting, and so we're so excited, so now we get to go on to phase two. And we like to thank everybody that supported us through phase one. It's been great support and the community, our friends and family and everyone doing that. It's been so gracious. So, this is what the leaderboard looks like, and we can show you that Wilmer is in there. So, our next phase of voting starts on Wednesday, June 17th. That will go through July 22nd. But the interesting part of this is after July 15th, they're going to have a voting period that's called Howling at the Moon. So, from the 15th to the 22nd, they're going to shut off so that people can't watch how many votes your community gets, so they have kind of like a dark period. So, we want to make sure from the 17th to the 22nd, we have a large lead, so we know that we're in a good position. So, please go out and vote on Facebook and on the Pets Safe website and keep us going. So, we have a lot of good stiff competition, and we're very excited that we're in that phase. So, we do have stickers. We're planning on selling some t-shirts. So, we're kind of trying to make everything positive and trying to do what we can to run, raise funds for the new park. And of course, this is my dog, Charlie Boy. He votes every day, twice a day. It looks pretty enthusiastic. And this is Scott's dog. He's always tired because he's got a happy, and he has a happy owner because he's always wants a new dog park and always running for a dog park. So, thank you again for your time, and if there's any questions, our committee is here, and we're more than willing to answer any questions. So, thank you again for all your help and support.
Thank you. Questions from council? Okay. I want to just thank you all for your hard work. It's excellent news, and again, all of the councilmembers as well have a Bark For Your Park, and of course, part of it is civic involvement in what you do for the community and those types of things. So, of course, I'm sure this will be on your Facebook page and entered into the Bark For Your Park competition and good exposure, so that's important.
Yes, and I have heard that this is one of the, a new thing for Wilmer to be part of a community competition grant type of fundraising thing, so... And tell all your friends, family, anybody around the United States can vote, doesn't just have to be in Wilmer, so spread that word. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Okay, good news. Councilmember Fagerly just reminded me, if you'd like to stick through our entire meeting and just see what fabulous work we do, you certainly can, but feel free, it's a nice evening. If you want to go out and enjoy the evening, you're welcome to do that as well, so it's your choice, so...
Escape.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
See you, James.
Okay, next on the agenda is the open forum.
Joe Riddler, 1912 20th Avenue, Southwest Wilmer, Minnesota. Mayor and council. April 4th, I asked a couple questions during that meeting. One is very important, is the culverts leaving the city of Wilmer on ditch 23A. I asked politely if we would contact the state of Minnesota and see if they'd clean those out, and I was just wondering, you said you'd get back to me. I asked you twice at the meeting. Sir, I did not receive any answer back. I'm just wondering if we contacted the state of Minnesota to clean those out?
The interim city administrator, I spoke about this, man, it's got to be a month ago, and we were working on, did we get anything, Kevin?
I have no answer at this point.
Mr. Christensen, do you have any answer?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay.
We're on the agenda, aren't we? Thank you. I'll move on to the next one. Thank you, sir. Fecal Count. Fecal Count is very important leaving our city. Now, the state of Minnesota, again, I brought up in a meeting, is testing our water every 15 minutes. It's a little hut behind Walmart. Have we done any testing down in that southeast part of our city? Very important as we move forward with these new programs. I might take over three minutes, but you need to know this. The state of Minnesota has changed the watersheds and how they are going to manage the watersheds. The city of Wilmer is unique. We have two watersheds. We got the Hot Creek and we got the Crow River. Folks, this is going to be very important moving on. The Hot Creek, we're okay. The Crow River, it's not good. We need to look at this. I can only bring this up. I don't want to be fined, okay? Third of all, what's unique about the sand that we take off our streets, we're lucky with Jeff Redberg, we use it as top dressing in our landfill. It's very important for the process of him rotating the garbage out there. We're lucky to have that. The citizens of Wilmer need to know that, and as much garbage as we can pick up does help so they don't have all the crap in there, because they are recycling the sand to reuse in the landfill. I don't know if you folks know that or not. The other thing is we're mowing lawn right now, and when you mow your lawns, the grass clippings have nitrogen in them, a lot of nitrogen. And it may sound funny to you, but the more people that mow and discharge grass into the streets, goes down in our stormwater, goes downstream into our lakes, and we have a lot of algae bloom, and that's what creates the poor water quality. And again, Wakanda has a lot of high nitrates, so the citizens of Wilmer, I can only bring it up here to get as much publicity, if they would please watch what you're doing, because the more stuff we discharge downstream affects the water quality downstream into Big Candy, Little Candy, dah dah dah, you get the picture on that. Other than that, I have one more question for Sean, but I'll contact him. Thanks for the time, and I hope I'm making sense to you all here, but we really need to pay attention to what's moving forward, because they are going to tighten the qualities of our water moving downstream. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, can we make sure that we get those answers? Kevin, can we make sure that we get those answers to Mr. Riddler, please? And then if you can copy the council on the response to. Sue Quest.
Sue Quest, 1451 Hanson Drive, Southwest, a Willmar resident of Ward II for 28 years. I'm here to make a plea. The Recall Ron Group, alias Moving Willmar Forward, needs to stop their bullying. Your bullying, the majority of our city council, is now overflowing into Ward II. During the weekend of Memorial Day, you went door to door and dropped off your propaganda. If we were foolish enough to believe your meritless accusations, we could have contacted you via your website, your email, or US Mail. You're relentless. You, including people that don't even live in Ward II, have canvassed our neighborhoods two to three more times with your petitions. Stop your bullying. Many residents are feeling harassed by you. The West Central Tribune threw news articles, their editorial, and your letters to the editor are continuing to promote your self-serving reckless agenda. Ward II was made aware that your tent was going to be upholstered across the street from Wyack on Election Day. Your tent on compassionate care property was an obstruction, putting people and property at risk. Ward II knows you will be present near Rice Park during the band concert. Your antics will disrupt a typically peaceful community event. Some citizens of Willmar will not be attending this year because of your bullying. Enough is enough. Stop your bullying. Adults are supposed to be role models of positive behavior. It is especially sad to me that some of our retired teachers and retired police liaison for the school is participating with a group that lacks respect, trust, and civility. The majority of residents from Ward II are growing weary of your harassment. Maybe that's your objective, but I say, stop your bullying. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Councilmember Anderson.
Finance Committee met on Monday, June 8th. There were no public comments. It's moving into the items on the agenda. The Willmar Municipal Utilities Finance Director, Hunstead, presented their proposed residential net energy service rate of .1003 cents, just a little bit over a dime. This rate was calculated based on established formulas required by Minnesota statute and is available for any small qualifying facility of less than 40 KW capacity that offsets energy delivered by the Willmar Electric Department. Willmar Municipal Utilities has received an application from a residential consumer who is intending to construct a solar generating facility and desires to sell excess energy back to the Willmar Municipal Utilities. So whenever we have someone out there that is building or proposes to build a solar generating system, any energy that they don't use, they sell back to the utilities, and we're required to establish a rate, and that's what we're doing here. Following some discussion, there was a motion made, set, and passed, and I'll move the recommendation of the committee to set a public hearing for July 6th, 2015, on an ordinance authorizing the proposed residential electric net service rate of .1003 as presented.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion? Same sign. The motion carries.
The next item on the agenda was the 2015 Street Improvement Project financing. Staff explained to us that in order to finance the street improvements already authorized by the city council, $1.4 million of bonds is needed to fund a portion of the $2,138,231 in proposed improvements. The bonds, along with funds from state, MSA, the remaining look-aloption sales tax, and MUC will fund the improvements as proposed. Local institutions have indicated their willingness to participate in the bond issue again this year. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded, and passed, and I'll move the recommendation of the committee to set a public hearing for July 6th, 2015, on an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $1.4 million of general obligation improvement bonds, Series 2015A.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion does carry.
Next item is archery range improvements. Staff explained to us that the city wrote and received a grant from the Minnesota DNR to purchase equipment and make improvements at the archery park. Revenues to be realized are $1,500 from the DNR and $640 from Little Crow Archers. The Little Crow Archers have been strong supporters of improvements being made, and due to these improvements, are hosting two shoots in June that will bring many archers to the city. Following discussion, there was a motion made and seconded, and I will introduce a resolution to increase the Public Works Maintenance of Improvements operating budget by $2,145 to make improvements to the archery range and increase the state grant revenue by $1,500 and donation revenue by $645.
Second.
The resolution has been introduced and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item was the League of Minnesota.
Just a minute. Yes.
Pursuant to the direction of the city attorney, we have to have a second resolution accepting those donations.
Well, so we could, okay, so I'll introduce a resolution to accept the donations of $1,500 from the DNR and $645 from Little Crow Archers.
Second.
Resolution has been introduced and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Anderson.
Okay. League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust Insurance Annual Dividend. Staff explained to us that the city historically had an assigned self-insurance fund balance of $1 million. Last year, $250,000 was loaned to help finance the city auditorium project with the intent to use annual League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust dividends for repayment. With the 2014 dividend repayment of $31,916, the balance of the amount loaned would be $218,084, and increase the assigned self-insurance fund balance to $781,916. That was for information only.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
City Administrator Halliday, so this amount of money will then be taken away from funds available for the 2017 budget, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, part of the program, when the dollars were identified for the city auditorium project, was to follow this plan. Therefore, those dollars, I believe, were not used in the budget and not anticipated to be in that fund balance.
Thank you.
And this is going to continue until it goes back to its million-dollar threshold.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead to Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a report from the 53115 Convention and Visitors Bureau. That was for information only. And under miscellaneous, we had one item, and that's a Going Green $6,000 funding request. Staff explained to the committee that the city had again been asked by Lakeland Broadcasting to participate in their Going Green cleanup efforts to be conducted in September. This is a citywide project where people can take things out to the recycling center and have their items taken care of. The city had stated their support for this effort at a community development committee meeting on April 30th, 2015. Funding possibilities include excess funds anticipated in building permit revenues of the departmental capital outlay appropriations or from the fund balance. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded, and passed, and I will introduce a resolution to increase the 2015 Civic Promotions expenditure budget by $6,000 to fund this effort and to increase the 2015 building permit revenue budget by $6,000 as well as the offset funding source.
Second.
The resolution has been introduced and seconded. Kevin, on this, you and I also talked about this, and the funds are available to be used out of this because it's excess over what was budgeted amount, correct?
The projections for 2015 for the building volume was roughly 209,000, and it's anticipated now with the projects that it could be near 300,000, and that's extra revenue that can be used by the council for any use.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
That concluded the business of the day. Unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, file the minutes. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, same sign. The motion does pass. Councilmember Christensen, Public Works, Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on Tuesday, June 9th, 4:45 at City Hall. We called a meeting, the order, there was no public comment. Well, excuse me, there was a public comment. Ms. Linda Ketcher from 407 Country Club Drive stated she had some questions regarding the dog park and is anticipating they will be answered in the presentation that's followed. Item number three, as usual, is our police update, and this is for information only. Our police chief, Mr. Jim Felth, noted that the jail census for that day, June 9th, was 158. Eighty-four of those inmates were from the Department of Corrections, 73 from Arone County, and one from Chippewa County. Calls for service for the previous two weeks totaled 878. They're going up a bit. The number of calls for service are going up. The majority of the calls were for traffic stops, public assists, and suspicious activity. Total calls for service so far this year are 410 calls ahead of 2014 at the same date. Our committee discussed the national ad out and obtaining additional information for groups in Willmar participating in that event. Item number four, information also, was the dog park presentation, which we had earlier, so I think I'll skip over that. We all saw what they had to offer here. Item number five was a resolution from the same dog park committee. Staff presented to our committee for approval a construction of a fence for a new dog park at Lions Park. We received only one quote from Andy's Fence All, and that total was $21,495.55. That was for a commercial-grade, black-coated chain-link fence. It will have a double-gated entry, as was shown to us earlier, and will allow Public Works equipment to enter and maintain because of that wide gate. $150,000 was budgeted in our CAP for the park development and included the purchase and construction of the fence. Was discussed adding and advertising on the fence to help offset costs to the city for amenities related to the dog park. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded, and passed for the following, and I will introduce a resolution to approve the construction of a fence for this dog park at Lions Park from Andy's Fence All in the amount of $21,495.55.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
The motion, resolution has been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Christensen.
Item number six is also a resolution that has to do with the scoreboard replacements at the Civic Center. Once again, staff brought forth to our committee the replacement of the scoreboards in the Cardinal Arena and the Blue Line area. These would be by Daktronics, and the amount would be $45,371. The scoreboards are scheduled for replacement as defined in our CIP, and again, we received only one quote. It was for LED scoreboards through the Minnesota Service Cooperative contract. $38,849 was for the Cardinal Arena and $6522 for the Blue Line Arena. Again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded, and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve the replacement of these two scoreboards in the Cardinal Arena and Blue Line Arena by Daktronics in the amount of $45,371.
Second.
The resolution has been introduced and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After passing the resolution, we discussed approving an additional $653 for a two-foot by 10-foot non-backlit sponsor panel for the Blue Line Arena scoreboard, and a motion is made and seconded for that. I will introduce the resolution to approve that additional $653 for that two-by-10-foot non-backlit sponsor panel for the Blue Line Arena.
Second.
Resolution has been introduced and seconded. Seeing number one call.
Councilmember Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Christensen.
Item number seven was also a resolution. It has to do with the Civic Center HVAC Design and Construction Services. Once again, our staff brought to us for approval Civic Center HVAC Design and Construction Related Services Contract and Addendum Number One with Stevens Engineering. The city contracted with Stevens Engineering for the mechanical systems evaluation study in August of last year. That evaluation provided a refrigeration and mechanical assessment of the HVAC system with the findings presented at our February 2nd meeting of this year. The Design and Construction Related Services detail Phase One of the project, which includes the replacement of the dehumidification system in the Cardinal and Blue Line arenas, infrared heater adjustments, and updating the electrical equipment. Addendum Number One to this resolution includes additional Design and Construction Services to replace outdated electrical switchboards and panel boards in the Cardinal Arena. The professional services contract totals $81,600 with an additional $4,800 for that addendum Number One to be paid from our 2015 CIP for this particular HVAC project. Again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve the Civic Center HVAC Design and Construction Related Services Contract in the amount of $81,600 and also addendum Number One in the amount of $4,800 with Stevens Engineering.
Second.
Resolution has been introduced and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Christensen.
Our last item was miscellaneous discussion. This is only for information, and it was brought to our attention that we will have a discussion later on about the water retention plan for the homes in the Valley Golf Course area developed by Kuzman Construction. There being no more items to be for us, unless there are questions or comments, I would move to file these minutes as stated.
Second.
Motion been made and filed, file the minutes. Discussion. Kevin, I had called for a roll call on the motion for the Blue Line Center backlit. Was that supposed to be just a simple motion? Or doesn't it matter?
The $653?
Correct.
We did a roll call.
Right, but do we need to, is my question, because otherwise we have to do more paperwork in the morning, is what I'm thinking. If we could change that to a simple motion, would that eliminate that need? Staff has plenty of work to do, I'm not trying to create work.
We could probably tie it into one motion, I can take a look at that in the morning.
Okay, council's okay if we do that?
Sure.
That was my error, so. All those in favor filing the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to that motion, same sign. The motion does carry. Next, Labor Relations, Councilmember Amen.
Labor Relations Committee met Wednesday, June 10th. There was a roll call, others present were Mayor Marv Calvin, councilperson Audrey Nelson, interim city administrator Kevin Halliday. Note, there were no public comments from anybody at that time. Item number three was the appointment of the fire chief, fire marshal. Staff informed the committee that an interview panel of council appointee Jim Dawkin, state fire marshal Bruce West, and interim city administrator Kevin Halliday interviewed five internal applicants for the position of the Wilmer Fire Chief Marshal. It is staff's recommendation is to offer the position to Frank Hansen, who is currently a Wilmer police officer. Mr. Hansen has been a volunteer firefighter for 22 years. The applicant's driving record and criminal record have been reviewed by the Wilmer Police Department with no remarkable findings, and a clinical forensic psychologist review is scheduled, which is a standard practice for department directors. Motion was made and seconded and passed that upon passing the clinical forensic psychologist test that Frank Hansen be offered the position of Wilmer Fire Chief Marshal at the annual salary of $82,000, and I will move that recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Frank Hansen as our new fire chief fire marshal, discussion. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed to the motion, same sign. The motion does carry.
Item number four was resignations or retirements. Staff informed the committee about resignations or retirements in the city of Wilmer, which include Troy Serene, Serenia?
Serenia.
Serenia.
Civic Center Arena Manager effective June 26th. Calvin Minor, Public Works Operator effective September 8th of this year, and Richard Dahl, Public Works Operator effective February 27th, 2016. Staff noted the job duties of this Civic Center Administrator's manager are under a review and will only be filled if no changes are recommended by the CER Director Steve Resonin. The first Public Works Operator vacancy will be posted internally immediately. And Kevin, could you please remind us of how many years of service these employees have? Was it 25 or 27 or longer years? Recall.
I cannot recall that right now, Councilmember Amen, I will probably include that in the Friday memo.
All right, thank you very much. It was quite an extensive service to our city. That was for information. Item number five was the interim city administrator, city clerk treasurer salary. Staff informed the committee that Mr. Mayor Calvin, Mayor Kelvin and Kevin Halliday met to discuss both the city administrator job description and city administrator establishing ordinance number 989 were received. The committee discussed the compensation, a motion was made and seconded and passed that the set $24,266 annualized additional compensation over the city clerk's annual salary, and the motion carried, and I will move the recommendation to the committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to consider motion as presented, discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I am not opposed to the salary motion, however, the motion from June 1st was to clarify the job description with what could be done and what couldn't be done, and I know there was some documentation that was presented at the labor meeting, but I have additional questions and would ask the city attorney's opinion or for someone to speak to the items that our interim administrator is not going to be able to do, and I think that was documented in some of the documentation from the labor committee, but it was not documented with what the day-to-day administrative duties can be with department heads and people who are considered at his same level, so I'm asking for clarification on what those job descriptions that he's not able to do are.
I'm going to see if Councilmember Amen wants to answer that first, and then we'll refer it, unless you want to refer it right away, Councilmember Amen.
Well, what we did do in the discussion, we discussed, because that was the conversation, we discussed the issues of negotiations and how much time was taken, or they felt time was taken, for staff to currently do that work, and that was the understanding is that the current interim city administrator would not be involved in that particular process at this time due to some arrangements and some things that are going on with the negotiations with their current staff people, and that will not be part of the job description, from my understanding that Mr. Halliday will perform, that will be performed by the Labor Relations Committee. If there are obstacles that come up that cannot be handled internally, they will be brought back to the labor committee until we hire a full-time city administrator to fill a position. If I'm wrong, or Mr. Mayor, if I'm wrong, please correct me.
And then the issue of employee evaluations.
Pardon me?
Employee evaluations.
And employee evaluations, yeah.
Mr. Scott, would you like to additionally respond to that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't have any other additional items. I was not asked to review the job description and opine on that, and I did not. I am aware of the discussion that took place. To the extent there was comments about our office having concerns that staff wasn't able to do all the jobs currently in the position, that conversation, I think the comments we had were not related to specific items that aren't getting done. That just, we didn't give that advice, so. I will say we advised you, Mr. Mayor, at some point, right before the interim administrator took over, that it would probably be a smoother transition if you were involved more day-to-day than you might ordinarily be, but beyond that, our office has not reviewed the job description and identified items that we think are not getting done.
Okay, I think the specific question was, were there items identified that he shouldn't be doing, correct?
I assumed that our city attorney had reviewed the job description with that. I mean, I understand the negotiation in that part of it, but my concern is from a day-to-day management of, he's in the same classification, in the same negotiations with the other department heads, and so my question is what supervision, what can he do and what can't he do as it relates to his peers, and so I assumed that the city attorney had reviewed the job description with what could be done and what couldn't be done.
City Attorney Scott.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, just apart from simply reviewing the minutes and what took place at the labor meeting, and understanding that it was the consensus of the committee that the interim city administrator should not be conducting performance evaluations of department heads, our office has not identified other items in the job description that the interim administrator cannot be doing. Does that answer your question?
Councilmember Nelson.
I guess I still have some concerns. I see the salary as being different than the day-to-day operations, and I have a concern for what, where our staff can go to if they cannot go to our interim administrator for some direction, I guess I think that's worth the city attorney responding to that, so whether that's a second item after the salary, but I do have a question about that, from a day-to-day standpoint, how we're operating.
Councilmember Amen, would you like to respond, otherwise I could?
Yes, I could, you know, as outlined in the information given, it's saying that the city administrator will not be doing any evaluating, that's perfectly clear in the, or the information that was given there, as far as the, if there is, I think we, I believe what we discussed was if there was a situation where there was a grievance and it was going through that process, that we would have to temporarily rely more on Frank Madden if there should be something that comes up with the department head's first-line supervisors' issues, rather than have Mr. Halliday deal with those issues, and the Labor Relations Committee would have to set up a plate and also participate in that until the new city administrator is filled. I hope that answers your question.
I hear what you're saying.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes, excuse me, sorry. I hear what you're saying, I still think that it merits the city attorney reviewing. If you can't do someone's job performance evaluation, then how do you supervise them on a day-to-day basis? So, I guess that's a question and a concern that I have.
Okay, would you like to entertain that in the form of a motion? The motion that was presented at the last meeting was to have the interim city administrator and the mayor meet to work this out. We did that, we presented to the labor, so if you'd like to make that in the form of a motion, we certainly could have that reviewed by the city attorney.
As a separate motion, beside, I mean, we have a motion on the table, so I don't know that I can make a motion right now unless I'm amending it, and that's not what I was talking about.
Correct, but what I'm saying is, are you going to want to do that down the road? Because I think paramount to this motion is, is what do we do with the current city administrator? And it's the, what the direction that I thought we received was, is that the two of us were supposed to sit down, we reviewed the charter, we reviewed the city ordinance, and we reviewed the job description, and we did that ourselves, just the two of us in his office. We met on two separate occasions. One time was just a brief introduction, conversation less than five minutes. The second time was a considerable conversation, Kevin, I don't know about how long that took, but we went through the job description step by step, went through the ordinance, and then we also reviewed the city charter.
But that documentation isn't here, excuse me.
Correct, but it was presented to labor.
I think the only thing that's in the labor is just addressing the annual reviews.
Okay, what would you like to do on the motion on the table? Additional discussion?
I would propose to make a motion after we vote on this, because I do think there needs to be a clarification and to have the city attorney look at it after that.
Correct, okay, that's fine, I was just kind of wondering the direction you were going, want additional discussion as of the motion that's presented right now. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Councilmember Nelson.
I would make a motion to ask the city attorney to work with the mayor and the interim city administrator to review the job description and what can and can't be done as it relates to the day-to-day supervision of the department heads and in regards to their performance appraisals. If they can't do the performance appraisals, I'd like to know how we can manage on a day-to-day, and if there's anything else that has a conflict because of the labor contract.
Second.
City Attorney Scott, do you understand the motion?
I do, sure, we'll be happy to take a look at it, if that's what the council votes.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Anderson.
You know, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the concerns that we had, and it will get clarified with this discussion, was a lot of areas of HR can be very delicate and could be potentially awkward dealing with peers, and I think if we can just clarify some of these things, we'll be in good shape, and I don't anticipate that it's going to be a big project or a big problem, but I think it makes sense to have it looked at.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you read the motion? I heard a lot of, a lot of talking, and I don't know what the motion is.
Interim administrator Halliday, would you read the motion? Would you repeat the motion?
It's to ask the city attorney to work with the mayor and the interim city administrator to review the day-to-day activities as it relates to the supervision of department directors and what obstacles we would have there when you can't evaluate them.
Pursuant to the job description. Is that correct?
Close enough.
Councilmember Christiansen.
But isn't that the duty of the interim administrator to supervise the department heads? I mean, and the mayor and you have sat down already and gone over this? I don't see the need for this, for this particular motion, I mean, it's, I think it's understood by all of us, and it is the interim administrator's job. You oversee the department heads. Just because they were your peers when you weren't, that doesn't play a part here, it's the interim administrator oversees day-to-day activities of the department heads. That's what I see.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I guess.
And Councilmember Nelson.
Have you had any problems, Kevin? I'm not aware of any, I'm just.
Councilmember Johnson, members of the council, we have a good working relationship with the fellow department directors. I'm overseeing and listing some of their job duties, and at this point, it's kind of a mutual, explaining to me what they're up to, and if I had to rearrange the direction of some of their things, they would willfully do that, but at this point, we haven't had that little problem of what direction we're going on what items.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
I believe this statement was made that he could not do evaluations, that was something you agreed on. So if we have a staff that requests an evaluation or a staff that has a problem, they can't go to him for that. Is that what, not, you said before? So how are we operating on a day-to-day basis? I think it merits us being protective from a legal standpoint. We have someone who's in the same labor negotiation with the other department heads, he has not removed himself from that, and I think we just need legal clarification of what can and can't be done. That's all I'm asking for.
Councilwoman Brown, you want to answer that, or would you like me to answer?
Well.
It was talked about at the labor committee, that's why I'm asking you.
As far as, I think there has to be a level of trust in this particular case, I don't foresee any problems. It's a good point, and I appreciate your concern, Audrey, or Ms. Nelson, but from my understand, if he is not, our interim city administrator is not able to see the previous job performance descriptions, which I believe has to be approved by Robert Scott, then I don't see what the problem is, because that's all confidential information, and as far as Kevin being in the bargaining unit with the other group that's still in negotiations or still in the process of getting finished, I don't see what the difference would, I really don't see what the difference would be. I don't foresee it, and as long as he's not evaluating them on a annual basis, I don't know, when's the next time you do evaluations? I believe they were done of the former city administrator different times during the year, sometimes they were two years before they're evaluated, so I'm a little confused. I don't know what the schedule is of evaluations, and if somebody could light me on that, I'd sure like to know. That, I hope answers your question, so I don't see a problem, because if the evaluations were sitting for two years and not being discussed, why all of a sudden is it a concern now?
Maybe it's more of a protection for our other staff also. I don't see why it's a problem to get legal clarification.
I have no problem with legal clarification, Mr. Mayor.
Additional discussion. Okay, simple roll, a simple motion, correct?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The motion does carry. Back to you, Councilmember Amen.
All right, thank you. We had consideration of, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Consideration of comparable.
No, I just, my fat fingers got in the way, excuse me, just one moment.
I'm doing the same thing you're doing.
What happened to the days of paper? No. All right. Consideration of comparable city administrator's job description. You have the same one I do? No, I'm sorry.
Item six.
Consideration of comparable city administrator's job descriptions, as for information, staff was direct to collect a few city administrator job descriptions of regional cities with city charters. Job descriptions of the city of Brainerd, city of Bemidji, city of St. Cloud were included in the agenda. It was consensus, the committee, to direct staff to share the jobs descriptions with all council members, and inform the council members to review and offer suggestions to the city clerk no later than noon on Wednesday, June 17th, which is fastly approaching. Staff will compile a list of possible changes and share with the committee at the Labor Relations, which is a full council meeting, this June 17th at 4:45. Item number seven was the open forum protocol. I noted that the open forum protocol was placed on the future agendas list with intentions to continue discussion of the open forum rules. Staff was directed to leave them. on, of the open forum rules. Staff was directed to leave them, leave the item on the agenda list, and there is also discussion of discussing this at or when we have our next annual retreat. There be no further business, Mr. Mayor. I believe I will move to file the minutes.
Second. Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, the same sign. The motion does carry. Consideration of one-day to four-day temporary sales, on-sale liquor license. City Administrator, interim city administrator Halliday.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you the temporary on-sale liquor license of the Wilmer Downtown Development, Inc., which is a nonprofit organization. They're requesting authorization to provide alcohol for their event called Beer on Becker, a social events located at four fourteen Becker Avenue, which is in the city celebration. And to have alcohol on that, in that parking lot off of Becker Avenue, they need to approve a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license to hold the event. As a nonprofit organization, they're eligible to serve that themselves without a state liquor caterer, and that is their intent. It's staff's recommendation that we approve the license as they've presented it.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the temporary on-sale liquor license as presented. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution does pass. Designate the responsible authority for data practices. Mr. Halliday?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, we have, we must, by state statute and by resolution, adopt the naming of a responsible authority who is in charge of the data practices and records retention policies. And as you heard today, I think in your training, that has to be done and kept current. And at this point, the last adopted resolution was on a reorganizational meeting in January, naming the prior city administrator. Staff's recommendation is to keep that current, and until the appointment of a full-time city administrator, we're recommending appointing the interim city administrator.
So moved. Second. The motion has been made and seconded to appoint Kevin Halliday as our data practices guru. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is the consideration of a petition to vacate a portion of Abbott Drive. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, the city is in receipt of a petition from Parker and Paus for the vacation of a portion of Abbott Drive Southeast Right of Way. It would be that portion of the right of way that lies northerly and easterly of the cell tower that was constructed down there approximately four or five years ago. Property has never been developed, and it's the intent of the petitioners to put the property into the RIM program. The planning commission has considered and approved the vacation with the retention of utilities, man, as there is municipal utilities line that runs through there. The next step in the process is for the council to conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation request and its recommendation of staff, that the public hearing be held on July sixth, two thousand fifteen.
Will be approved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the public hearing. Discussion.
Done by resolution.
I'm sorry, this, resolution? Okay. Resolution has been introduced and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next on the agenda is, before you, at each of your workstations, there are four proposals for city administrator search. That information was received by our city offices today, and that closed at four thirty. Kevin has made copies available to each of you at your workstation, so we're asking you to come prepared for the meeting on Wednesday on a recommendation. What you do not have in front of you is a tally sheet or a spreadsheet listing the cost of each of them, and so that will be prepared prior to Wednesday's meeting and will be handed out at that meeting. So if there's any questions about that, otherwise, that is for information for the council.
Mayor Calvin?
Councilmember Nelson.
Is the, are the costs in here, or is it possible to get that emailed out before that we can look at that also?
They're in there.
City Administrator Halliday.
H RFP requires the detail of their proposed financials, and they are in each one of those. They're just not in a comparison chart of a spreadsheet.
That's fine.
Would you like that emailed ahead of time?
Doesn't matter.
Staff could get it together?
Okay.
Either ways, okay. Okay. Anybody else have a request on that? Okay. Announcement of council committee meeting dates. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee will meet Monday, the twenty-second, at four forty-five.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Tuesday, the thirtieth, four forty-five.
Councilmember Ammon.
No labor to date.
I believe there's a labor committee meeting on.
Just tomorrow, or Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yeah. That was read in the minutes, but I can announce that again. Wednesday, four forty-five.
Okay, and.
Full council, here.
Full council meeting here, yeah. Councilmember Fagerly?
We're going to meet, we were going to meet next Thursday, but that's Wilmerfest, and there's a lot of activities going on. So I'm going to ask the committee, do they want to meet on the twenty-fifth or July second? That's Thursday, too, so. Audrey, do you have a preference?
I can't be there on the twenty-fifth, so.
Second. Tim?
Either date's fine.
Andrew?
I'd prefer the second.
Second?
I'd prefer the second.
July second, then, Bruce. Okay, so committee will meet on July second at four forty-five, City Hall. Anything else for the council? I'm adjourned. Second. We are adjourned.